Very happy to be at the swearing in ceremony for Kevin Dahl, our new council member, Richard Fimbres, our returning and senior council colleague, and Steve Kazatchek, returning and senior council colleague on the Tucson City Council. So today is going to be a simple, yet very important ceremony that our city charter leads us into and dictates for us to have the ceremony today. I'm very happy to welcome you all and your families to the city council chambers, which by the way, we had not used since we all left in March of 2020 because of the COVID-19 pandemic. So it's an intimate gathering, but it is a happy occasion. So today is Monday, December 6th, and we will have council stand in session. Mr. Plurg, he's got a roll call.
Mix out the crews.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham. Mix Ulik. Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Fimbres.
Here.
Mr. Kazatchek.
Here.
Narumau.
Here. Item two.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, in which it stands public, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you all. Item three.
Introductions and mayor and council comments.
First and foremost, I would like to thank councilmember Ulik, who served the remaining term of councilmember Durham with grace, with intelligence, with humility, and with a great sense of serving Ward Three residents and Tucson city residents. I am always amazed at Karen's ability to serve the residents of our great city, her big heart, and her willingness to really go above and beyond for our city. So I thank her. Unfortunately, she was not able to join us today and was very sad that couldn't be, she couldn't be at this inauguration, but she has commitments that she could not get out of. I also want to congratulate my colleagues, my returning colleagues, Richard Fimbres and Steve Kazatchek, for the reelection. I want to welcome our new member of the Tucson City Council, Kevin Dahl, as the Ward Three council member, and I'm looking forward to the work that all of us in the council can do for the benefit of our beautiful city. I'd like to invite my colleagues on the council before we start with the swearing in. If you'd like to include anything, I'll start with councilmember Santa Cruz and then come down the line.
Mayor, do we usually say something about the outgoing council member at this table?
Whatever, whatever's in your heart.
No, I'm feeling super honored to be sitting around this table with all of y'all today. I know it's been a long and challenging, almost two years now, but looking forward to the work. I was just talking to Tim right now about how these movements bring about, you know, new energy and new possibilities, and that I'm looking forward to this next chapter in the mayor and council, serving with councilmember Dahl and continuing to serve with councilmembers Fimbres and Kazatchek. And then I'm going to miss Karen very much, somebody that I've always looked up to, see as a mentor, but feeling super grateful for the opportunity to have served with them. Thank you.
Councilmember Cunningham is working today, and since he is a teacher, can't really just leave. So we're trying to connect them virtually, but we now move to vice mayor, Vice Mayor Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Much like what you both have already said, it's been such a pleasure working with councilmember Durham and councilmember Ulik. I learned a great deal from both of them with the issues that they really led into. So it was just such an honor, and I have learned a lot from councilmember Fimbres and Kazatchek, and really looking forward to the positive work. It has been really challenging, two years. We think it would be like that when we took office, but we navigated it together and learned a lot and grew, and I look forward to where we're headed next. So congratulations to all three of you.
Councilmember Fimbres.
Good morning, Madam Mayor. Thank you for this introduction. I want to thank everybody in the audience. I want to thank the citizens of Ward Five and the entire city of Tucson for their vote and support of my work as a Ward Five council member. I want to thank my staff, Lupita Robles, Mary Kuchar, Gabriel Hoke, Matthew Taylor, and Mark Care for their work, their accomplishments completed. But their work has not been finished. I want to thank everyone who was involved with this election for their work and efforts. I also want to express my thanks to the votes of all six wards voted for me. I especially want to thank my wife, Mary, who's in the audience, my sons, Richard Michael and Joseph, my daughter, Vanessa, and Ariel, my grandson, Trishio, our little granddaughter, Juliana, and our office mascot, Salty, our Boston Terrier. Thank you, guys, for being here and being supportive. We have lots of challenges still ahead of us, Madam Mayor, who I think with your leadership in our council, my colleagues on the council. Then we can meet it. I want to thank Kevin Dahl for coming on board. Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't say goodbye to my friend Karen Ulik. She's been, she really stepped up, helped us a lot with his trying times, his challenging times, his challenges that we've been able to make into opportunities for our community to grow. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fimbres. Councilmember Kazatchek.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would agree with three colleagues here. Thank Karen for her service stepping in. It's really difficult times, you know, doing this virtually. It's had some complexity that we weren't used to, but she stepped in and really helped out. I also want to welcome Kevin Dahl to the dais after the swearing in. I look forward to working with you over the next four years, Kevin, and congratulations on your election. Same for Richard. Welcome back. I'm looking forward to continuing to work with both of you as we, as we work, you know, on some really complex and difficult issues that are on our immediate doorstep. And so with Mayor, Councilmember Santa Cruz, and Lee Paul as well, that we're going to just take right in starting tomorrow. So here we go. I want to recognize Pastor Bart Smith, who will be doing my invocation. He and the St. Mark's congregation, and his staff, and great partners in all sorts of different social issues, including gun safety, immigration, his homeless outreach, and so I'm honored to have Pastor Smith here during the, during my invocation. During this swearing in, we're going to use my mom's Bible, and it's been in our family for 130 years, since 1892, when her grandmother arrived in the United States. Mom spent a lot of time in these chambers, and it would be nice to have her back in spirit. Wish my bride, and love holding it up because the Bible probably weighs as much as my mom did. So you'll see when she steps forward. Richard and Kevin have invited representatives of Osceolaaki Nation to participate in their swearing in invocation. With representatives of some of our original inhabitants here, we're also, we're also going to have a representative of one of our newest inhabitants here. During my swearing in, who will be Judge Ahmad Nahy Waqili. Ahmad is an Afghan refugee. He's been in the United States for roughly two months. He still has family stuck in Turkey, and we are working right now on that reunification. In Afghanistan, Ahmad was involved in their judicial process and adjudicating charges against Taliban and ISIS. So some very serious stuff. Ahmad is now among the hundreds of Afghan refugees who are making their homes in Tucson, and today he will begin that journey by participating in our democratic process. And so Ahmad, welcome, and I'm glad that you're here to participate with us. Thank you.
And I'm here.
Councilmember Fimbres.
I wanted to welcome David Dominguez, who's doing the blessing for me today, and also Chairman from the Pascaiaki Nation here, Judge Pollard, who's also here, and also Judge John Davis, who's also been doing swearing in. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
They're welcome. Appreciate it.
It is an honor to have all of you here with us today on such a special occasion. Alrighty, so now that we're done our introductions, we will move on to item four.
Post office invocations.
We will now commence with invocations and the swearing in of those elected November 2nd of 2021. Will councilmember Kevin Dahl please move to the podium? Judge John Davis will administer the oath of office to councilmember Kevin Dahl, Ward Three. He will also be joined by his son and his wife. Alrighty, the invocation for councilmember Kevin Dahl will be given by Chairman Peter Yokupisio, Chairman of the Pascaiaki Tribe. First, we will do the invocation, and first we will do the swearing in, and then the invocation.
Good morning. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right.
Nervous, but ready.
All right. Repeat after me, please. I, Kevin Dahl, do solemnly affirm.
I, Kevin Dahl, do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the ordinances, resolution, rules, and regulations of the city of Tucson, Arizona.
And the ordinances, resolutions.
Rules and regulations.
And regulations of the city of Tucson, Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of councilmember Ward Three of the city of Tucson, Arizona.
And I will faithfully and dutifully discharge the duties of the office of city council member of the city of Tucson.
Ward Three.
Of Ward Three.
According to the best of my abilities, so I do affirm.
According to the best of my ability, I do. So I do affirm.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
Madam Mayor, can I indulge just a few?
Absolutely. Please go ahead.
I meant Kevin Dahl. He was this goalie on my soccer team, and that prepared him for this job. Because we were the worst soccer team in Tucson. We went seasons without winning a game. We went seasons without scoring a goal. That prepares him for this job, I'm sure.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Judge. Chairman Yokupisio.
With the permission of the Santo Señor. With the permission of our heavenly Father, today, we welcome you to this board and these seats with the ones that are there. As a member of the Pascaiaki Tribe for hundreds and thousands of years, we have been here in these valleys, along with the Otam, and along with other tribes like the Apache, the Hopi, the Zuni. We have lived here, and it's with great, great honor that we turn it over to these hearts here and yours now. That the work that you do be blessed, sacred. Caoviaci, we say in our language, which it won't be that hard if you do it with your heart and passion. Father in heaven, today, Creator, we welcome also the members from other nations to our nation here. It is beautiful to see that we have become a great quilt of many nations to take care of this land which we call Tucson, Southern Arizona. Chukson is what the Otam called it. Our fathers and forefathers have taught us, together we are stronger. Together we can lend a hand. With an open mind and an open heart, may you receive all the blessings from all our ancestors up in heaven and all the ones that are here trying to make a living in this land that we've all tried for thousands of years. You will be installed in Ward Three. Others have been there before you and have held a special heart for our community in El Paso, down the road by Grand and the freeway. So we welcome you there anytime you want to come. We welcome you at the tribal nation up here on Camino de Weste, on Valencia, but we would like to then gifting our sacred deer. Not only you, but all the members and our members from our tribe welcome you to serve honorably in this great, great city of Tucson, to make sure that and you can put it on your desk, you can put it in your car, and you can put it sometimes here and wear it. Before Christianity and before, our tribe used to always have the blessing of the deer. This sacred seed actually is in reference to the deer. That's what it's called. But with this blessing, we have our Father, the strength of all that came before us and all that will come after us, to make you in your heart, in your mind, or purely for the position you're going to hold. With blessings, thank you. City council, I would also like to do the same for you because this is about being together, not about being separated. This is about us serving this great city of Tucson together. Mayor, may you and your spirit and your heart and your family always be blessed. And those decisions you have to make, always, always understand that many of us behind the polling, even the ones up there are still behind you supporting the blessings. From our people, to you, to your people, and your families, your ancestors, may they always be blessed with the spirit of all the Americans, even the dinosaurs, even the rocks, even the trees. All of them have life, so will you. Remember, there's still passage in the state of Arizona. But from our people, your people, your constituents, your members of the city council, always remember, always remember your service. Most of the times, even in my step after the chairman of the Pascaiaki Tribe, I always have to reflect to our ancestors and after guidance. They will visit, they will come, there are still a lot of them, they will support you. They will be blessed and from our country. Thank you, and thank you for inviting me, and thank you for, and your family for being
Councilmember Dahl, can you come and join us up here? Thank you so much, Chairman Yokupisio. That was so, so special. Thank you. Councilmember Dahl, welcome to the team. We will continue with councilmember Richard Fimbres. Councilmember Fimbres, can you move to the podium, please? And I would like to call your family if they'd like to join you. Also would like to call Judge Michael Pollard, who will administer the oath of office for councilmember Fimbres, and call Maestro David Dominguez of the Pascaiaki Nation to administer the invocation for councilmember Fimbres. So Judge Pollard, it's all yours.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that you will give, that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do, Your Honor.
Okay. I, Richard G. Fimbres, do solemnly swear.
I, Richard G. Fimbres, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the ordinances, resolutions, rules, and regulations of the city of Tucson, Arizona.
The ordinances, laws, institutions of the city of Tucson, Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
Of your true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of councilmember Ward Five.
Now faithfully and responsibly recharge the duties of Ward Five councilman.
Of the city of Tucson, according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
The city of Tucson, best of my abilities, according.
Congratulations.
Thank you. God bless.
I would, I would truly be remiss if I didn't comment at this time. Councilmember Fimbres has been an ardent supporter of the members of the military. He worked closely with, with me to start the Veterans Court in nineteen ninety, a court that enables veterans who benefit from minor charges to complete counseling and avoid the stigma of a misdemeanor conviction on your record. And recently, he's been honored to, to be appointed to the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame. So thank you very much for your service to the veterans.
Thank you, Judge. I want to thank you for the work you've given, a lot of hope to our veterans.
Maestro David Dominguez will administer the invocation for councilmember Fimbres.
Good morning, Mr. Cheniao. I would like to start off with gifting Mr. Fimbres a scarf. a scarf that we in the church or anyone in the ceremonial society and those that have the faith in our Creator. Almighty and eternal God, you have revealed your glory to all nations. God of power and might, wisdom and justice through your authority is rightly administered. We ask for your blessings upon our elected City Councilman, Richard Fimbras, our mayor, and all elected councilmembers, appointed staff, and their families for all they have done to serve and accomplish for our people of the City of Tucson. God, we pray to heal our aching world that we may see unity and peace. We pray that you will unite us in one spirit of love and truth. In the midst of so much suffering and pain from the COVID-19 pandemic and violence, help us to come together to create a better future for our Tucson community and children. Let us banish the brutality and stop the violence by reacting peacefully as you taught us to. God, we pray in a special way for those precious souls lost to illness and violence that you may comfort the families and friends of those who have been taken. God, pour out your grace upon us and renew it to the face of the earth. We need your spirit to transform all of our hearts. Help us to see in all of our fellow human beings honoring the beautiful diversity that you bless us all around the world. Bless our hearts with compassion and conviction to do something with injustice and violence in the world. May your will be done and your perfect justice, mercy, and healing be brought to this earth as it is in heaven. We likewise commend our unbound mercy, all citizens of Tucson, that we may be blessed and acknowledged and sanctified in observance of our holy law. May we be preserved in union and that peace which the world cannot give after enjoying the blessings of this life be admitted to those who are eternal. We pray who are in Yahud, who have never been...
Thank you, David. That makes you thankful. I also want to present Diana Hope. She's been so much help to our community, she's a senior, she's a close to working with our veterans. But she...
Will Councilmember Steve Kozaczek move to the podium, please? I will now welcome Judge Ahmad Lain Waqili, who will administer the oath of office to Councilmember Steve Kozaczek. I will also invite Pastor Bart Smith of St. Mark Presbyterian Church, which after the oath of office, will administer the invocation.
Hello. Good morning.
Morning.
Are you ready?
I'm ready. Let's do it.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Steve Kozaczek..."
"I, Steve Kozaczek."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"...the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona..."
"The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona."
"...and the ordinances, resolutions, rules, and regulations..."
"And the ordinances, resolutions, rules, and regulations."
"...of the City of Tucson, Arizona."
"The City of Tucson, Arizona."
"...that I will bear true faith..."
"That I will bear true faith."
"...and allegiance to the same..."
"And allegiance to the same."
"...and defend them against all enemies..."
"And defend them against all enemies."
"...foreign and domestic..."
"Foreign and domestic."
"...and that I will faithfully and impartially..."
"And I will faithfully and impartially..."
"...discharge the duties..."
"Discharge the duties."
"...of the City of Councilmember Ward Six..."
"Of the City Councilmember Ward Six."
"...of the City of Tucson, Arizona."
"The City of Tucson, Arizona."
"...according to the best of my abilities..."
"According to the best of my abilities."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
Thank you. Congratulations. I want to take this opportunity and thank all American people, especially my city, Tucson, Arizona, which welcomed me with open arms. And I want to congratulate Mr. Kozaczek, and I hope you succeed and wish best of luck. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Question?
Before I begin, I want to thank Steve for this honor and for the invitation, and to thank you, Madam Mayor, and councilmembers and city employees for your leadership and your service in these extraordinary times. On behalf of the city, we are grateful. I want to also say it's an honor to share space with our neighbors from the Pasquio Yaki Nation and other traditions. It truly is sacred to be with you in this time. If prayer is your practice or simply reflection, I invite you to join me. Let us pray. Holy One, source of all wisdom and measure of true justice, we are so grateful for those who have said yes to your call to serve our city in leadership. Thank you that you have not only called them, but equipped them as well. Thank you for their willingness to do the hard work of making choices for the common good. Thank you especially for Steve, for the deep convictions, sharp intellect, refreshing honesty, and the 110% effort that he brings to his job. But mostly God of love, we are so grateful for his compassion that propels him to go above and beyond for the asylum seekers and refugees in our midst. Help him to not lose that sense of shared humanity, not only with those who cross borders in crisis, but with all the suffering and marginalized in our community. So in that same spirit, we pray that you would guide our mayor and councilmembers with an awareness that in Mahatma Gandhi's words, "The true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members." Oh God, when they are sifting through priorities and facing difficult decisions, keep at the forefront of their minds the faces of those in need, the faces of those the Hebrew prophets call "the widow, the orphan, the stranger, and the poor." For we know that your dream for all of us is one of freedom and abundance, where there is plenty to go around and all have what they need. Oh God, in these polarizing and perilous times, we pray that you would help our leaders model among themselves what you hope for us all. Bless them with an extra dose of what Galatians calls "the fruits of the Spirit," love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, gentleness, and self-control, especially the joy. And maybe even once in a while, we'll add one to the list, a little fun. Oh God, remind them of the privilege of living in and serving this glorious place that we call home. For in your many names we pray. Amen. Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you so much. Such amazing, wonderful, wise words. We move on to item five.
Organization of the council.
Role call.
Mixon de Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham.
Absent, excused.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Fimbras.
Here.
Mr. Kozaczek.
Here.
Mayor Omero.
Here.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dahl.
Can I say just a few words before we proceed to this?
Absolutely. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I would be curious if I didn't thank the many people who brought me here. First and foremost, my wife, Barbara Miller, and my son, Brian Dahl. And I didn't realize the protocol that I needed to kiss my wife when I left the podium, so... And thanks to Judge Davis for bringing up my illustrious soccer career and Chairman Yokopicio for that incredibly moving invocation. I'm so very grateful for the hundreds of people who supported me on the campaign. It literally made this day possible. I'm thankful for the work of my campaign team, including Teddy Bolger, Dale Turner, Danielle Hargit, Laura Delarstee Stevens, Bennett Bernal, Carolyn Campbell, Solil Vishpandey, and Chris McPhee. I am so honored and excited to be on this dais with people who have been governing the city so very well. I am thankful to the work that Paul Durham and Karen Ullig did for Ward Three, and I can only hope to someday, maybe soon, maybe it'll take me a while, match the quality of your service to the residents of the city. I campaigned on addressing the causes and effects of climate change at the local level, and I know that the mayor and council has been doing a lot of fine work, taking strong steps in this area. I look forward to putting my shoulder to the wheel and lending a hand to this very important one. You know, it's not just an environmental issue, and I've worked on environmental issues all my life. Climate change affects our economy, health, safety, and community welfare. All mayor and council policies from transportation to parks and net, from economic development to water rates impacted by climate change. At the same time, my office will focus on strengthening neighborhoods and building community relationships. Climate resiliency is not a top-down policy decision, but empowering people and connecting them with resources and tools to affect positive change. I'm thankful, so very thankful to be here with you.
Welcome, Councilmember. We're so happy to have you with us. Item five B.
Selection of the Vice Mayor.
City Manager's Communication Number 369, dated December 5th, is received internally part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution 23426 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23426 relating to the Vice Mayor of the mayor and council selecting a Vice Mayor.
What is the council's pleasure? Vice Mayor Lee.
Mayor, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to experience this role for the past this year. I've enjoyed a lot of opportunities to stand in for you, Mayor, including running a meeting, which was quite an experience. So I just want to thank you all for giving me that opportunity. And with that, I would be honored to move that we appoint Councilmember Santa Cruz as the next Vice Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and it... And two seconds. There's a motion and two seconds. Before we vote, this is part of discussion. If anyone wants to add, I would like to add my appreciation of the amazing work that Vice Mayor Lee put into being Vice Mayor. Really has been helpful, has been incredibly supportive of the work that we've all been doing on this council. Very work regarding COVID-19, regarding our economy, our recovery, regarding the health and well-being of every single city employee and every city of Tucson resident. Thank you so much for your hard work. You've done an amazing job. And I'd like to take this opportunity, hopefully this will be a unanimous vote, to welcome Councilmember Lain Santa Cruz to the role of Vice Mayor of the City of Tucson. The charter leaves open the description, the job description for Vice Mayor. So every single one of the council members had their perspective to being Vice Mayor. As the mayor, I like to give that flexibility of the council member that is doing the role of Vice Mayor to add your interests, of course, your support to the vision of what I bring to the table. But hopefully, we will celebrate you as Vice Mayor pretty soon, Councilmember. Any others want to add to the discussion?
I want to thank Nikki Lee, also for her duty last year. I want to thank, welcome Lain Santa Cruz, a senior worker as an aide and now senior worker as a councilperson. She brings a lot to the table. It's very positive, I think. Forward, we need to continue to move forward, take these challenges, and turn them into opportunities for everybody to grow. Welcome. Thank you.
Any others? Alrighty, thank you. So let's go to role call.
Mr. Dahl.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Fimbras.
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek.
Aye.
Mixon de Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Omero.
Aye. Resolution 23426 passes by a vote of six zero. Congratulations to all. Thank you. Item six.
Attainment.
The next regularly scheduled meeting of the mayor and council will be held tomorrow, Tuesday, December 7th, at 5:30 PM. In the meantime, I would like to invite the family and friends and staff to celebrate with us with cake and coffee for everyone at the City Manager's First floor conference room, which is just down the hall. Thank you all so much and congratulations to my new councilman.